Got a quorum. And all my clocks say at six thirty, so. I will call the Wednesday, January twentieth, two thousand twenty-one meeting of the Thurston County Planning Commission to order. We'll begin with introductions. Scott Nelson, District Three. Uh, Don?
Andy Han, District One.
Doug?
Doug Carmen, District Two.
Ed? You're muted, Ed.
Ed Fleischer, District Two.
Eric?
Eric Casino, District Two.
Jim?
Jim Simmons, District Three.
Think that's everybody. Did I miss anyone? Okay. So can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Right? Uh, any changes? And I just have one. I'm going to suggest that we move elections to the end of the meeting. So. Anybody else? Anybody have any problems with that?
Nope.
Okay. All those in favor of approving the agenda as amended, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries and can I have a motion to accept the minute? To approve the minutes from January sixth, two thousand twenty-one and accept the audio as the official record?
I'll move.
And second.
Any changes?
Um. The only thing I noticed is down under the motion on, under item five. Or no, I guess, boil note five. It, um, when it says, um, change all three reaches to shoreline residential and amend the boundaries to not include the undeveloped properties. Um, there, it's not, I don't know that it's specific enough because there are, there looked like there were two pieces of property inside the group that we approved to be shoreline residential that hadn't been built on yet. So I'm wondering whether there shouldn't be some words in there between include the like last two parcels in that one section or?
At the south end of the lake?
Right.
Maybe Andy can clear that up?
Could we just add to the, at the south end of the lake?
Yeah, so, uh, what I captured as your intent from, from that conversation last time was that the, uh, the developed portions, so that the, the two northernmost reaches and then the, uh, developed lots in that third reach to the south, that those developed lots all become shoreline residential. Uh, and that the boundary line of the, um, middle reach be moved south to kind of swallow up those residential lots and so that those two undeveloped lots at the bottom would be in a separate reach and I did not record any, um, uh, desire for planning commission to change those lots that contain that wetland and agricultural property to shoreline residential. That, those were, what I took for is my marching orders based on that meeting.
I think that's correct, but I'm not so sure the motion actually says it that way. That's why you need to insert something in there because our intent was just what you just said, Andy.
Okay. Uh, I can, I suppose I can work with Polly on how to do that. So.
Thank you.
And then under item seven, um, the, uh, Ms. Davis asked for two volunteers to be on the annual voting committee that should be nominating committee. It should say nominating committee for the two thousand twenty-one planning commissioners, commission officers. Rather than the annual voting committee to choose officers for twenty, we don't choose them either, we nominate them. So. I would recommend change the word voting to nominating, delete the two choose officers. And then add the word officers at the end of the sentence.
Anybody have any objections to that? Any other changes? Could all those in favor of approving the minutes as amended and accepting the audio as official record, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, so public communications. Let's find. Let's see here. So. So. Okay. Okay, uh, Barry Halverson?
Uh, thank you, Scott Commissioners. My name is Barry Halverson from the Lake Lawrence Community. Uh, represent the Lake Management District at Lake Lawrence, uh, along with being a member of the Lakes Coalition that, uh, John uh, is the chairman of. On the seventh of January, uh, the Lake Lawrence Community Club, representing over three hundred community members around Lake Lawrence, submitted a letter to the planning community planning manager, Jennifer Davis. I'm not going to talk about that, uh, letter tonight, but I understand from talking to Andrew that that'll be a topic of discussion, uh, at your next meeting in February. But what I would like to ask is that Andrew provide a copy of that letter to all commissioners prior to that meeting. Uh, what I'd like to address tonight is the chapter six hundred, which you're going to be talking about. Uh, chapter nineteen, six hundred, one thirty-five A, where dredging and dredge disposal. Item number four, which was added, uh, says that, uh, the, if you're doing it as a matter of maintenance dredging, that a SDP is not required. My question is, what about a cup? Or what about SEPA requirements? Uh, it's mentioned under, uh, B, that quantity of material removed is specified in SEPA applications and or grading permit. In the past, uh, the past being a little over ten years ago when we dredged, the only thing we had to get was a hydraulic permit. So I'm not sure what this is going to do as far as changing that, but I would certainly like to know from, uh, Andrew. Uh, next item on six hundred is where you talk about grading for lakes that do not contain salmon. Uh, Lake Lawrence Community, uh, wholeheartedly agrees with that. You should not have to have grading requirements on lakes that do not have salmon. And I'll say again for the record, Lake Lawrence does not have salmon and does not have steelhead and there's no way that they can get there, even though several documents that the county has to include in the permit section indicate that that's the case. And page one sixteen, consideration, a shorter distance for spacing pilings in the lake such as ten feet. Anytime you put a specific requirement in a document that says must be spaced twenty feet apart lengthwise, I think is wrong. You need to literally look at that carefully and change that. Um, ten feet might be appropriate, but in some cases it could be eight foot. I think there should be a variance there. Next item is your width of your piers. Uh, four foot is very narrow, uh, for lakes that have a lot of water skiing on them and the, and the, uh, docks wash up and down. Our docks on Lake Lawrence, the average width is about six feet. So we concur with the, uh, the option for public hearing. And the last one was strike the requirement for grading requirements, which shows up several times in paragraph six hundred. That's all I've got for tonight, Commissioners. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Okay, Lynn Lanuette?
Hello Commissioners, I'm Bob Lanawett, sitting in for Lynn Lanawett. Um, I have, uh, two things I'd like to talk about and um, oh, I'm, uh, live on Holmes Island Road. Um, I want to talk about six hundred one sixty, C, one P. So that, um, that paragraph talks about when covered mortgage and covered watercraft lifts are replaced, the replacement structure should be transparent roofing materials. So I think I understand the concept of having a transparent roofing material, but I'm not understanding the application in this instance. If you have a lift, your boat's going to sit on the lift most of the time, so no sunlight would be getting down into the water. For the short time that you take your boat off of the lift, there will be sunlight coming in, but that would be really limited. So I don't know why you would want to put that restriction on for the sake of having transparent covering over a boat lift. Many people that have boat lifts that have covers, at least on Long Lake, keep their boats year round in that lift. So the amount of time that they, that this, uh, this, um, trans loosened covering would allow wa, uh, a light in would be limited. The next thing I'd like to talk about is down lower in that same part of one sixty are the diagrams concerning, um, single use mortgage and joint use mortgage. So the diagrams show a float that I presume would be the dock that you would anchor or tie your boat to. And it says in this application that for a lake, that float would be, um, um, t- ten feet. Uh, eight by fifteen in lakes. So a fifteen foot dock or a fifteen foot um, float may be appropriate if you were back in the sixties, seventies and eighties when boats were fifteen or sixteen feet. Nowadays, boats on lakes are up to twenty feet. So a fifteen foot structure to hold down a twenty foot boat would not be uh, really appropriate in high winds and, and rough water. So I would suggest that maybe these restrictions, um, be removed on, on the length and, um, or put in some, uh, variance that maybe the planner or when you go to install, um, that, that is the, um, time that you establish the length. Thank you very much for allowing me to, uh, ramble on about that and have a nice evening.
Okay, I'm going to have, I'm going to mess up this name. Cadu Veloso?
Yes, it's, uh, Today Veloso. Can you hear me okay? Yes. Okay. Um, good evening, planning commissioners. Uh, my name's Today Veloso, like I said, and I'm an attorney with Philip Spurgis and I'm here tonight on behalf of our clients, Dejore Investments. Um, I would like to direct the Commissioners' attention to the letter submitted on behalf of Dejore dated October twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty. That sets forth the legal standards and analysis, uh, supporting designation of LOFs one, two and five as a rural conservancy. Um, I'd also like to call your attention to the shoreline reconnaissance report for the Dejore property that was prepared by Alex Callender of Land Services Northwest. First, uh, I'd like to note that the shoreline regulations require that the county consider the existing conditions and historic usage of properties. Under the SMP guidelines, the natural designation is meant to, and I quote, protect the shoreline areas that are relatively free of human influence or that include intact or minimally degraded shoreline functions intolerant of human uses. Uh, however, site-specific evaluation of the Dejore property itself shows that there are few areas that would be considered relatively free of human influence in this specific shoreline segment. In fact, most of the property has been developed over the last century with vacation and recreational uses, including a dance hall, beaches, visitor cabins, docks and piers. And importantly, the Dejore property does not meet any of the specific designation criteria for the natural shoreline designation found in the SMP guidelines. The report submitted by Mr. Alexander confirms that, um, that the property is not ecologically intact and does not appear to be providing any irreplaceable function or ecosystem-wide process that would be damaged by human activity. The area does not represent ecosystems or geologic types that are particular scientific or educational interest and the property is able to support new development or uses without significant adverse impacts to ecological functions or risk to human safety. As I mentioned, unlike the natural designation proposed for this specific shoreline segment, which again meets none of the designation criteria, the property meets multiple criteria for the rural conservancy designation under the SMP guidelines, including supporting lesser intensity resource-based uses such as recreational uses, having high recreational value, currently accommodating resident, residential uses outside urban growth areas and incorporated cities or towns, and supporting human uses while being subject to environmental limitations such as proximity to the steep banks. The current zoning and shoreline segments, LOFs one, two and five, is entirely consistent with the rural conservancy designation. Any potential degradation or depletion of the area's biological resources are mitigated by the critical area buffers as set forth in Title twenty-four of the Thurston County Code, which currently apply within the shoreline jurisdiction by ordinance and will be adopted by reference in the proposed SMP. Um, in addition to critical areas, the proposed rural conservancy designation in the draft update will provide for buffer, buffers, excuse me, between one hundred and ten and one hundred and fifty feet as documented in the calendar report or designation.
To wrap it up here pretty quick because your three minutes is up.
Okay, I'm almost done. Yeah, so, um, the designation of rural conservancy rather than that will result in no net, net loss of ecological functions in this particular shoreline segment. Uh, such, I respectfully request that the commission recommend as a designation of rural conservancy for LOFs one, two and five instead of natural in the draft that is forwarded to the Board of County Commissioners. Thank you.
Okay, we've got somebody calling in with a nine-two-five. Oh, they just went away. John Woodford?
Commissioners. Uh, I just want to speak very briefly. I, you should have all received a letter from me, uh, uh, from the coalition. Uh, and I just want to touch briefly on the two points that I brought up in the use and, uh, modifications matrix, the beginning of chapter nineteen, six hundred. Uh, as I point out, uh, in this la, in the immediately previous to this pink edition, uh, the water-oriented industrial uses, which had been prohibited all the way up till then, were suddenly, uh, listed as conditional use permit. And, uh, as I, I see absolutely no reason why in any form of industrial use should be allowed in shoreline residential SEDs. Um, Andy, in conversations I had, said this would never happen except where the underlying zoning was uh, industrial. And I asked him if he could give me an example of any place where there was an industrial zone that had a shoreline residential SED. I, he never got back to me on that. Um, I can't believe it exists, but if it does, I really feel that the footnote should be in, inserted on that that says that the s, uh, CUP would only apply in areas where the zoning allows for industrial development. So it does not happen in a residential district. Um, the other thing, just briefly, Barry Halverson mentioned this. I included a plan of the dock on my property. Uh, and I think the, the, the whole designation of a minimum spacing for pilings should be eliminated, eliminated on freshwater, on lakes and so on. Uh, as you can see, I've got spacings of six feet and eight feet and nine feet in different parts of, of my dock. And this is a, a fairly modest dock as, as, as they go around here on this lake. Um, I see the twenty feet is just totally absurd for freshwater docks or piers and, uh, I, I would propose removing any limitation on the spacing of pilings on freshwater docks. Thank you. That's what I've got for tonight.
Mark?
Yes, can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Thank you. Uh, good evening. My name is Mark Hancock, representing Segali Properties. We own, uh, five, five acre parcels on the west side of Offutt Lake that you will be looking at tonight. Four are along the west side in the reach called one to two, which is the long western reach. And one is down on the lower southwest in that little reach called five to one. They are all, uh, zoned rural residential, one house per five acres, and someday we wish to put a house on each parcel. We are seeking to preserve our right to do that in the future. So we're asking you tonight to allow our parcels to remain conservancy and not to become natural as proposed in the SMP. All of our parcels today are currently zoned conservancy, which at the moment has a one hundred foot setback for a house. We strongly believe that we should remain conservancy, even though with the new SMP, it'll be called rural conservancy and you will be expanding that setback to a hundred and fifty feet from the hundred currently. We can live with that increase, but we strongly object to being further downgraded to natural where the proposed county SMP language pushes the setback to the full two hundred feet. Uh, only if a lot is unbuildable beyond two hundred feet can a house go into the two hundred feet and the flexible setback language you have elsewhere does not apply to natural unless that's also the case. In your packet tonight, you'll see a report from a biologist consultant who will, who would be the most qualified to make this call. You will see in his report that our properties never fully meet any of the natural designation criteria and several not, they don't meet at all. Well, with rural conservancy, our parcels meet several criteria exactly, and the others are at least partial. We meet rural conservancy far more than we do natural. It's as simple as that. Please look at the colored charts on pages five and six of the biologist's report. It's in your packet tonight. I think on the PDF, we're, we're in the top part of the PDF. It's pretty easy to find. Uh, as they show very clearly what the biologist found. Our objection to naturals further complicated by the fact that the county's proposed SMP is more restrictive than the state WAC. The state WAC allows a house anywhere in the natural area, not, not with any setbacks, and I'll quote it. Quote, "Single-family residential development may be allowed as a conditional use within the natural environment if the density is in, and intensity is of such, uh, of such is limited as necessary to protect ecological functions and be consistent with the purpose of the environment." So the WAC is very open there. The county, on the other hand, has changed that in the SMP draft you have now forbids a house within the two hundred feet if it can be placed elsewhere in the lot. Um, there are several criteria for natural and for rural, rural conservancy, but the PowerPoint tonight only focuses on the first half of the first criteria item for natural, which is the ecologically intact shorelines. But however, if you look at the second half of that criteria in natural, it, it says that they must be important and irreplaceable. And as Mr. Veloso told you tonight, he, as, as with his property, our properties are not, uh, are not irreplaceable. They are not important. They are not unique. They are not scientific value or educational. Our trees are not old growth and if this wasn't on a lake, nobody would even be looking at it. Um, the WAC language also allow a single house five acre lot over fifty feet shoreline, sensibly designed with no net loss, with no impact to the, I guess, my, my point is we're talking one house on five acres and the WAC, if the WAC allows it anywhere in natural, certainly the county can find a way to allow a house on a, on a five acre lot. It's, it's already a hundred and fifty feet from the shoreline. It's not going to have any impact if it's designed with no net loss. Um, so we would appreciate.
Wrap it up, Mark. You're running.
Thank you. Okay, the last thing would be in the, my letter today or yesterday. We also suggested, and Andrew had some good ideas, that you take a look at how to maybe make this process more administrative so that's easier for staff and, and you all. And I would also take a look at the buffer setback requirements because they could be made more flexible and natural. Thanks a lot, guys.
Okay, I don't see any other hands up. Okay, Kristy?
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yay, that worked. Good evening Commissioners, Kristy White. I live in the Delphi Valley. Um, this evening I just kind of wanted to, uh, some general comments from sort of a thirty-two thousand foot view um, for the county. You know, as I look over the last year as the decisions have been made about mineral lands and asphalt recycling and ADUs and industrial warehouses. Um, I, I just wanted to point out about what's coming next, which is a regional airport and sort of put on your docket, um, to be thinking about what the ramifications for that will be for our county. Um, having lived under Sea Tax Airport for a good part of thirty years under the runway, uh, I know what it means to live underneath a flight pattern. And you know, when you have a seven forty-seven cargo plane at four o'clock in the morning flying over your house, um, let alone some of the other environmental, significant environmental impacts that come with an airport of any size greater than what we already have at the Olympia Airport. So I know that's sort of been tabled for a while, but you know, experience, it's going to percolate and to, to really start thinking about that and how a balance can be made. Um, as we move, you know, Thurston County is long leaving now our, our economic um, industries of a university and state employment, and we're really leaning towards the industrial. I also find it kind of interesting that, um, we have moved, you know, away from what I would consider maybe not as balanced in environmental, um, perspective with mineral lands, asphalt, et cetera. Yet on shoreline master plan, it seems like that position is really focused on going to an environmental protection. Um, moving from say rural conservancy to natural. Um, I just find it an, an irony with some of the other decisions that, that we've made. One other thing I wanted to point out too is that, you know, we've got a lot of forestry land here, um, in Thurston County. And we've got a lot of herbicides and pesticides that are poured into those lands and how that also affects our county. So just, just some, in, some thoughts and comments that I wanted to share with you this evening. So thanks for listening and good luck with SMP. It's a lot before you here. Thank you.
Uh, Alex Callender?
Hi. I'm Alex Callender with Land Services Northwest. I wrote one of the reports on the properties, uh, the DeForest Investment Property on Offutt Lake there. And I just wanted to give you a little bit of my credentials. What, I would work for ecology. I was a wetland and shoreline specialist for eight years and I was actively involved with the shoreline master program updates. I went out on tours with the inventor, inventory and characterization people when, where they were creating some of these documents and, you know, I had stuff on my desk every day looking at shoreline environmental designations. Um, this, uh, area right here, I'm arguing for rural conservancy over the natural. If you look around at the, uh, natural environments, you see the Black River Wildlife Refuge, Missquali Wildlife Refuge, Water Bay, you know, things that are the, so often these are not in my backyard kind of issues, but you know, the natural environment really isn't in people's backyard for the most part in Thurston County. Except for now, it, you know, this particular instance, it seems like it is. So I, I don't see it as an appropriate designation here. But, you know, I, uh, I think I did my homework here and tried to give you as convincing an argument as possible, looking at all the looking at all the information that's been gathered on the area. So I hope you can see things the way I saw. Thanks for, thanks for your help in this, and I really appreciate you guys' work. I know the best thanks again probably is like tacit compliance, but you know, I really appreciate all your work. Thank you.
Okay, that's all the hands we have up. So move on to our work session on shorelines.
Okay. Good evening, Commissioners. Andrew DePhobus, Community Planning. So tonight, well, let me launch the PowerPoint here. We've got a couple of things we're going to do tonight. The first thing we're going to do is talk about proposed shoreline environment designations for Offutt Lake. And then I will follow up with you on some items from previous meetings. And then we will launch into our continued review of the SMP document, beginning with chapter 19600. Okay, are, is everyone seeing the PowerPoint? Look, okay. All right. Groovy. So here's the overview of what we're doing tonight. So the reason we're talking about Offutt Lake proposed designations is that we have received some questions from the landowners along the western side of the lake about the proposed designations. As you've just heard during public testimony, there have been inquiries from Segali Properties to own several parcels along the west side of Offutt Lake and also the DeJour Investments Property, which is in the same reach as, as some of those Segali properties. As you know, the shoreline environment designations have been a hot topic at Planning Commission. So there's been quite a bit of talk about how people can know what their shoreline designation is, what it's proposed to be, and how they could propose that the county take another look at that if they don't think that the, the proposed SMP and its supporting materials have gotten it quite right. So both of the landowners that we're going to talk about tonight, well, in the reaches that we'll talk about tonight, submitted consultant reports, as you have heard. Those reports were distributed to the Planning Commission with your meeting materials and are also posted on the Planning Commission website. So if at any point you wish to refer directly to those documents, let me know. We can pull those up and, and look through those. But the bottom line is, as it was last time we talked about this, the Planning Commission has the ability to take a look at these shoreline environment designations. They are preliminary. If we receive, you know, additional information that differs from what's in the record and the shoreline environment designation criteria support that change, the, the planning commission has the ability to, to do so. So here are the specific questions we received, as I think you've already, you already know. So both, both Segali Properties consultants and representatives and the representatives for DeJour Investments have stated that they don't believe that the, their properties support the proposed designation of natural for these areas and that they wish for the rural conservancy to be retained and that that's more appropriate. So just to give a little bit of background for context, this is the same information that we went through at the last meeting and builds on all the information and all the times that Planning Commission has talked about shoreline environment designations over the recent past. The bottom of this slide shows previous meetings where shoreline environment designations have been a topic of conversation. This process of inventorying and characterizing shorelines is part of the SMP process. The, the state law and the WAC direct jurisdictions to inventory shorelines and then provide for what they to propose and then provide the shoreline environment designations for those. And there are state laws that guide that process. Thurston County earlier in its update went through the recommended menu of shoreline environment designations from ecology and selected to use five of the six designations that ecology recommended and develop criteria for those that's consistent with what is in the WAC. The Thurston County Shoreline Environment Designation Report outlined the criteria that the county applied to shorelines to determine which said each shoreline was going to fall into. And then also the methodology for doing so. Essentially, the inventory and characterization, the information that is generated from that process for each shoreline reach is evaluated alongside the criteria to propose the shoreline environment designation is the most appropriate for each reach. And the preliminary SEDs that are in the shoreline environment designation or said report were made to protect shoreline ecological function, looking at the existing and the proposed pattern of development along the shorelines. And generally speaking, the methodology states that reaches were proposed to be designated natural if they have very high quality habitat function and minimal shoreline modification. They were proposed to be shoreline residential if they were plotted out for or developed at relatively high density and have more intense uses. And one consideration there is whether the majority of the lot area is within shoreline jurisdiction. And then all other shorelines that didn't fall into those, either of those buckets were given a designation of, a proposed designation of urban or rural conservancy. So I have up, just for reference here, this is snippets from the shoreline environment designation report for each of the, the three most relevant designations for this conversation. And we can refer back to this if necessary. It's kind of just in here for reference. But here ours, the purpose designation criteria for the natural environment from the shoreline environment designation report. And then I've also got it for rural conservancy and shoreline residential if we happen to need it. Okay, so for context, here's Offutt Lake. For anyone who is unfamiliar, this lake is located in the center of Thurston County. On the left of your screen, you'll see the county with the yellow circle in the middle. And within that circle is Offutt Lake. It's down by the, about a mile or so in from the intersection of Old Highway 99 and Waldrop Road. We're going to be focusing on the west side of the lake in the southwest corner. So what you're looking at here on the aerial, and I don't know if you can see my cursor or not, but this large wedge shaped parcel here, and then moving down along the lake, and then also this, this area down in here. So the first reach we're going to look at is Lake Offutt One to Lake Offutt Two. On the left side of your screen here, you'll see an aerial photograph with yellow lines on it indicating, thick yellow lines indicating the, the boundaries of that proposed reach. And just to point out for context, the DeJour Investments Property that Mr. Callender spoke about is this large property up here at the top. And then the Segali properties in this reach, if I'm not mistaken, are the five properties, starting with this parcel and then going down to the southern terminus of this reach. So we have heard from and seen documentation from the landowners of six out of the seven reaches here, written documentation. And then on the right hand side of your screen, this is a snapshot from the shoreline environment designation tool that will go out as part of our open house materials that shows in transparent underneath the yellow, which is the conservancy designation, and then the proposed overlay over the top is the natural. So that's, that's why we're here, because this is currently the, what is proposed. Okay, so I wanted to briefly walk you through, kind of looking at the conditions on the ground adjacent to the information that is in the criteria for the various SEDs. Again, the consultants for both of these, or for most of the properties here have provided information for you to review. And we can look at that if, if you would like. So taking a look at this reach, all of the, all these parcels are outside of the incorporated areas of the county. So they're all in, in, in the rural county. And then are they currently supporting low intensity uses? So one parcel is supporting forestry, and that is the DeJour Investments Parcel up here at the top. Although most of that activity, if not all of it, appears to fall outside of shoreline jurisdiction. Closer to the shoreline, you see a lot of the vegetation is retained, at least in the, the recent past. And a lot of the active logging is further back from the shoreline. This property is in current use, so current use in the open space tax program for, for forestry. So all of the properties may support recreation as evidenced by trails that are throughout the property. So I was able to go out on site to both of the properties that are the subject of the consultant reports you received. And there's evidence out there of trails which indicate human use of the property for recreation. Two of these seven parcels are currently supporting residential uses. So that's, there's a couple, there's a cabin and I think a smaller accessory or guest, guest house on this DeJour Investments Property. And then the parcel to the south also has a home on it. And then the remaining five parcels to the south to, which are the Segali properties, do not have structures on them. We didn't see any out there. They're not, there's no structural information in the accessor rolls. So yes, there are residential uses in this reach in the northern portion. Oh, whoops, sorry, I flipped a slide. So the, the property does appear, or this reach does appear to be supporting human uses in the, with range from, you know, residential in the more northern part of the reach to recreational throughout, as evidenced by the trails and, and other, other signs of human activity in the area. And it is subject to environmental limitations. There are steep banks out there. There are some wetland conditions, you know, along the lake shoreline, I believe. And you know, the entire lake has a flood plain. So technically, you know, it, it has that restriction on it. And then is it, could it support lower intensity water uses? It appears to be able to do so. As far as any private or publicly owned lands of high significance for cultural, historical, public access. There was no significant opportunity noted in the SED report. However, both, both of the, you know, and the inventories. So when I go back and look at the information that the, the county pulled together for these reaches, I didn't see anything noted in the inventory. But both consultants do make mention of the, both the past and current recreation use of this shoreline as a whole. So as was alluded to in the past, there was a, like a dance hall up on the, the northern parcel there for the DeJour Investments Property. There, you know, and I think there was past usage of this as logging camp and, you know, recreational area. So they note that, you know, current and past recreational use of the shoreline. And then does it meet the designation criteria of the natural environment? So the consultant reports, as you've, well, as you've heard from the consultants and their representatives and their, their reports, all state that it doesn't appear to meet the natural designation. That's their conclusion. When trying to look at, you know, what was, what was considered and what was looked at in the county making that, that proposal, what I would point to is that, you know, the, the swath of vegetation close to the shoreline appears to be largely intact. It's, it's not old growth, but it is, it's largely intact. There's presence of native vegetation. And the shoreline is largely unmodified and free of structures, except for those two northernmost parcels. So looking at the criteria for the natural environment for this reach, again, is it ecologically intact? The consultants concluded that it is not based on patterns or development in portions of the reach, past logging and human activity that is visible on these parcels. And they also state that it is not irreplaceable, given that this is third growth and continues to grow back and replace itself. So that's what the criteria is here, ecologically intact and therefore currently performing an important, irreplaceable function or ecosystem wide process that would be damaged by human activity. And consultants are saying no on that one. Is it considered to represent ecosystems and geologic types of particular scientific or educational interest? The consultants have concluded that this reach does not represent such ecosystems. The SED report, the shoreline environment designation report developed by the county does say yes on this reach, but there's no documentation for that. So I don't have any information as to why that conclusion was reached. Is it unable to support new development or uses without significant adverse impacts to ecological function or risks to safety? The consultants say that it can support new uses. They don't express concern for loss of ecological function based on, you know, protections that are in place in the SMP and critical areas protections. The one thing I wanted to point out and potentially is a consideration made in the SED report is the loss of vegetation that could occur with development and the loss of function that that vegetation provides. Does it include, whoops, does it include largely undisturbed portions of shoreline areas such as wetlands, estuaries, unstable bluffs and other things, including ecologically intact shoreline habitats? The, so it's currently along much of the reach, the vegetation is undisturbed, but it depends on what timeframe you look at. So the consultants both note that, you know, this, this whole reach of shoreline has been the subject of past logging activity. Currently, the vegeta, the standing timber there is about 70 years old, but they point to past logging activity on the site as concluding that it's not ecologically intact. The northernmost parcel, which is the DeJour Investments Property, you can see here underneath that canopy of trees, it's, it's lawn. And then there's a mix of native and, and non-native vegetated understory as you move closer to the lake. So does this retain the majority of its natural shoreline functions as evidenced by shoreline configuration and presence of native vegetation? Both the consultant reports and what I observed on the ground out there indicate that this whole shoreline has a mixture of native and non-native vegetation. And the configuration of the shoreline appears to be largely unmodified. Is it generally free of structural modifications? Or structural shoreline modifications, structures and intensive human uses? So that depends on where in the reach you're looking, right? There's kind of a gradient of conditions here. So as you're further up in the northern portion of the reach, there appears to be signs of more intense human activity. And I say that due to the presence of logging and lawn. And there's a dock and home on the northernmost parcel, and then there's a home on the one parcel to the south. And then as you move further south in the reach, there are no more, appear to be no more large permanent structures. Although, again, the consultant reports note that the whole area has been subject to logging and they indicate in their conclusion is that that is an intensive human use and is something that has occurred here. Okay, so moving on, this is the reach that's directly to the south of the one we were just reviewing. This is Lake Offutt Five to Lake Offutt One. On the left side of your screen, you can see that on one side, this reach is bounded here. And then on the other, it comes out to this parcel. So, and it's, it's largely, it's the wetland that is to the southwest of Offutt Lake. And then that portion of shoreline, which is along those, these two parcels here. So that is where we're looking. Okay, so to look at this reach adjacent to the rural conservancy criteria, again, outside of the urban growth areas and all municipalities, this is out in the rural county. Is it currently supporting lower intensity resource uses? I'm unaware of any official forestry uses, agricultural uses. It would be recreational opportunity for the landowners if it is supporting that use. Only one out of the, so to go back, this, the green polygon, which shows the parcels that would be included in this reach. It's about 13 parcels and only one of them appears to have residential use on it. And it's the one right here in the, the, the south of that reach. So it is accommodating residential use on one parcel. Is it supporting human uses, but subject to environmental limitations? It has residential use on one lot and, and any remaining human use, as far as I'm aware, would be recreation and perhaps that past logging activity. And all this land is going to be subject to environmental limitation because of the wetlands that are present and the shoreline. So potentially then it could support lower intensity water dependent uses. And again, I did not see any significant call out or call out of any significant recreational, cultural, historical or public access opportunity on these sites. But again, the consultant reports do make mention of the past and current recreation on this shoreline and this lake as a whole. And the consultants conclude that it does not meet the criteria of the natural environment just based on the past usage. When I look at this and when I look at what the, the planners that came before me would have considered, you know, you can see that there is a mixture of vegetation out here. The consultant reports note a mixture of native and non-native vegetation. The shoreline appears to be largely unmodified and free of structures, except on, you know, that one parcel. Okay. So looking on to the natural criteria, is it ecologically intact and performing an important irreplaceable function? The consultants have concluded no, just based on the past logging history and, you know, human activity on the parcels, that it's not irreplaceable, given that it's third growth timber. And I would again point out, you know, looking at the other side of that, the fact that the shoreline appears to be vegetated and free of a whole lot of modification or structures as a potential for why this was proposed to be natural in the shoreline environment designation report. Does it represent an ecosystem or geologic type of particular interest? The consultant reports state no. I didn't see anything specifically noted or called out in the inventory or the shoreline environment designation report, other than to say that, you know, wetlands are constantly the subject of scientific. Other than to say that, you know, wetlands are constantly the subject of scientific interest, but nothing specifically noted for these parcels. Is it unable to support new human, or excuse me, new development or uses without significant adverse impacts? Same information as for the previous reach. Both consultant reports say that it could support new uses. They don't call out any risks to human safety, such as unstable slopes or anything like that. I would just generally point to the fact that you look at these parcels in the condition there and now and think about, you know, the impacts that development could potentially have and the loss of function that could potentially occur. Does it include largely undisturbed portions of the shoreline, such as wetlands, unstable bluffs, ecologically intact shoreline habitats, et cetera? So again, the vegetation is currently undisturbed and, you know, most of our lifetimes. The consultant notes that the, the timber that's out there is about 70 years old. Points to past logging activity on the site as evidence that it is not ecologically intact or undisturbed. Although the consultant for the Djour Investments did note that there, if there is any undisturbed property that's out here at all, it's, it's in that with the wetlands that are, you know, occurring in this area. Does it retain the majority of functions regarding vegetation or sorry, as evidenced by shoreline configuration and the presence of native vegetation? The shoreline configuration appears to be largely unmodified and there's a mix of native and non-native vegetation as indicated by the consultant reports. And is it generally free of structural shoreline modifications, structures, intensive human uses? There aren't really any structures out here, save for one that is outside of the, you know, wetland here on this parcel. Although the consultants reports do note that past logging could be an example, or their conclusion is that the past logging is an example of a very intensive use on the landscape. So some information for you to consider is that shorelines vary. No two reaches may be alike. They're not identical. And a reach may not fit neatly inside of one shoreline environment designation box. It may meet the criteria of more than one shoreline environment designation, which is why we're all here. One observation I wanted to make is that when you look at the, the reach, I'll lake off at one to two, which is that first one we looked at. You know, it, this is an example of what, of this principle that they don't necessarily fit in one box. You know, it may meet the, the criteria of one, it may meet the criteria, some of the criteria of one or some of the criteria of the other. Again, the consultants have concluded that, that reach should be more appropriately designated rural conservancy versus natural. When you look at it, you see a gradient of conditions that the northern portion of the reach is more impacted. Human activity increases as you move from south to the north end of the reach. And I put this slide in here, I'm not going to spend a whole lot of time on it, but just as reference, if we need it, we you may spend some time talking about the concept of ecologically intact. And so I copied what came from the WAC in terms of, you know, what is an ecologically intact shoreline as used in those guidelines. Which a lot of it has been chopped up into those bullet points that you see in the said report, but here it is as one piece if we need it. So to bring you to some brief staff findings to bring this portion of our, of my talking to a close. Looking at Lake Offit Reach One to Two. It appears to meet the criteria of more than one shoreline environment designation. I think you can look at it and say, does it meet rural conservancy and build a case for that. You can look at it and say, does it meet natural and potentially build a case for that as well? When I'm looking at that, I'm looking at that there are some undisturbed portions of the property, at least in the last 70 years. Although some evidence of disturbance on the property that's more recent than that. Residential activity on a portion of the reach, one dock in terms of structural shoreline modifications. Native and non-native vegetation on the site. And that two parcels, that's repeating myself, two parcels have residential structures that are within shoreline jurisdiction. And so the planning commission, you know, you may propose to keep what's, let me say that again. You may keep the proposed designation, you may direct staff to change the designation. If the criteria support that change, that is totally in your wheelhouse. This information is simply to, you know, kickstart that conversation that you're about to have. For the reach below, Lake Off at Five to Lake Off at One. In my opinion, it appears to best meet the criteria for the natural shoreline environment designation, and that's what is currently proposed. In looking at that, I'm looking at how the shoreline has been undisturbed in the recent past. The presence of native vegetation onsite and wetlands and that there's one residential structure present in the entire reach. And again, the planning commission can keep the proposed designation, you can change the proposed designation if the criteria support that in your estimation, that is up to you. Okay, with that, I am going to stop talking and open it up for the planning commission for any questions or discussion or direction for staff.
Andy, could you remind us on LOF Five to One, who the property owners are and if they are, if they had studies on those two, or was it just on LOF One to Two that DeJour and Segali did are the primary owners and
So this, yes, oh, wait, what am, what am I doing? Okay, let me go back. So on this and Mark cannot, Mark Hancock cannot chime in and hopefully I will not get this wrong. But I believe Segali owns on Five to One, I think they own this one and they may own some of these parcels as well. I know that this parcel here, it, it does not show a Segali, it shows us a different landowner. I can't recall the name of it now, but it's another LLC. And then the same goes for all these small piano key parcels here, and this parcel to the south are not owned by Segali. So I think it's, it's these portions. And so the, the wetland, or excuse me, the both consultant reports make statements about this entire shoreline. So, you know, it's not, it's not separate. Their reports are not separated into sections that say, here's my findings on this reach and this reach. You know, they both make general reference to both of these reaches and then make statements about, about the land and, and where, where possible. You know, I tried to separate them, but you know, they're kind of all in one.
Could you, could you pull back up that map on LOF Five to One that was showing? That was showing the SED buffers?
Yes.
And it was, yeah. Yeah, this one. How many of these building, or how many of these parcels would lose the ability to have any kind of development done to them? If these were, if the difference between rural residential and, and natural. It looks like, you know, if you add in some 200 foot buffers or 100 foot buffers, some of these might not be buildable at all anymore, but I don't know that.
So this is an instance where we have to think about the interplay of critical areas with, with shorelines. And hopefully you can see my cursor here. So these two parcels in this reach are along the, the shoreline itself. And so when we talk about buffers on shorelines at lakes, that's the SMP buffers. This wetland is going to have buffers that are controlled in the critical area provisions. So
Critical areas and that will be 200 foot buffer?
Well, it's, it's, the wetland buffer is going to be determined based on site inspection and how it rates out. You know, when the consultant does their report on it. And the wetland buffers range anywhere from 50 to 300 feet in the critical areas ordinance. So it's entirely dependent on the characteristics of that wetland. That's what controls the wetland buffer.
Is, is the, the coloring that you have on here now is one of the, is green rural residential or rural conservancy and yellow is natural?
Other, other way around. So the yellow, the yellow semi-transparent or I suppose that's translucent. Layer is the current SMP. So yellow is, yellow is conservancy. Green is the green bright opaque layer is the proposed shoreline environment designation and the green is natural. And it looks like the, you know, the jurisdiction is potentially changing a little bit just based on, you know, data changes over time. They're based on different years of wetland data, but the green is, is what we are talking about in terms of proposed. And again, this is all, this is all just mapping information. It's all remote sensing, to some degree influenced by onsite visitation. The field conditions always control what's in and outside of shoreline or critical area jurisdiction.
It kind of looks like what they lose for a new SED they gain by new mapping. To a certain degree.
Well, it would appear that the, the wetland area as indicated in the green is smaller, right? And so if you're going to put a buffer on either one of those shapes, the green shape is smaller. I mean, that's, yeah, you can see that. But again, field conditions are going to control. So if, if they go out in the field, even though the green is what showed as the mapped jurisdiction, if that wetland boundary is out, out to here or even further, that's the, that's what's going to control where the buffer is placed.
Yeah, yeah.
Hope that our data gets better over time and more accurate. We hope.
Overlay, can you do a, a buffer overlay for LOF One to Two? Do you have that?
I don't have that. Let's go up and look at it. So the green swath is, is 200 feet. So it is, it is, and again, the layers are a bit different depending on which, you know, program you're looking at, but I believe that that green line is, it's a 200 foot wide swath that is placed measuring 200 feet back from what we have on record as the edge of that water body. And there's always some parcel shift and other weird, you know, nerd things that happen with data. But generally speaking, if you want a, a good measuring stick, that's 200 feet.
Is that second from the north parcel that is not a Djour or Segali property, but does have a house on it? It is, is it like currently a full-time home for somebody? And have we heard from that homeowner?
I don't know if it's a full-time home. I actually did hear from this landowner. You know, that they, like anyone else who has subscribed to our web mail, received notice that this meeting was happening and saw Offutt Lake and said, what's going on there? So I did have a chance to talk with this landowner yesterday, but they haven't submitted any formal written comments. But I walked her through all of this stuff and then I let her know that if this proposed designation were to stay the same, that she would be receiving a specific notification and along with anyone else, because it would be a change from rural conservancy to natural.
It'd be one of the 2,700?
It'd be one, she'd be one of them. So, so yeah, so I, I let her know that and explained that. That's why she didn't, you know, get her own notice that this was happening ahead of time, but that, you know, that is the next phase of this plan.
So Andrew, if this designation changes, does that mean those parcels are unbuildable?
It doesn't mean that they're unbuildable, but it potentially, it potentially influences the process through which they would go.
So it'd be harder, more difficult?
Um, potentially, and that's, that is the contention that's made by the Segali properties folks for these five lots. And I'm, I'm going to be careful not to speak too directly for them, but in their letter, they note other environmental limitations that are out there, such as wetlands and slopes. And they feel that a 200 foot buffer would make it harder for them to develop that. You know, in, in county code, there's always a, a provision to, for extreme circumstances to allow for reasonable use or through a shoreline permit process to allow for a variance. But, but again, that, that's more process, that's potentially more time and, and the outcome is not guaranteed. So to answer your question, it potentially leads to more process.
Since this reach tends to meet the standards for both, I would tend to go with the less restricted one and go for rural conservancy for this.
Yeah, I agree. I agree.
Quite, quite frankly, even, so I think LOF One to Two is a, is pretty easy to go to keep at rural conservancy instead of natural. And for LOF Five to One, I'm of the mind that the issues that are there with the wetlands and other critical areas are going to be protective of enough that I'm not, I'm not terribly concerned that turning that into natural is going to really benefit the environment any since I think that the critical areas ordinance is going to be what's going to be protective there. So I would be in favor of moving both of these property or keeping both of these properties as rural conservancy. Or both of these reaches as rural conservancy.
I agree.
I agree.
Someone care to make a motion?
I'd move to instruct planning staff to designate LOF One to Two and LOF Five to One as rural conservancy instead of natural.
Based on a review of the shoreline criteria and
Thank you.
Now a second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any other discussion? All those in favor of directing staff to leave LOF One to Two and LOF Five to One as rural conservancy rather than natural, please signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, so that appeared to be unanimous. Is that correct? Six oh?
I believe so.
Okey dokey.
So this kind of just in the side, this is a little bit of my concern when those 2,700 postcards come out. Are we going to get like 2,000 people that are going to want to talk about this? So I'm hoping that I, I guess staff is sort of planning for a big kind of a, what are you doing with my property? Folks coming out of the woodwork.
Yeah, I mean
You get that process started earlier rather than later, there'd be a lot of people that are going to be affected and are going to be wondering why.
I think earlier than later is, we're on that boat. We need to get this proposal wrapped up so we can put it out as the final proposal for folks to have that opportunity. Send out the postcard and start managing that process and answering folks' questions. And then there might be several more meetings like this where we're looking at bodies of reaches and we'll try to package those up as best we can to make it efficient. Anytime we're looking at, you know, major land use designation changes, I mean, that's, that's what we're gonna encounter. So we're ready for them.
Would it be fair to say that, that the people that you've heard from so far on this, the land use lawyers and the, you know, the professionals in this field are really the only ones that have contacted you so far because they're getting this information probably out of the inventory and characterization report. They're, they're probably savvy enough to look it up, but have regular people been contacting you at all on any of this yet?
Yes, it's, it's been a mix. So if, so for, for Offutt Lake here, it's largely been, you know, legal or environmental consultants. But for Lake Lawrence, it's largely been individual homeowners. So it's, it's, it's a mix.
Okay, I mean, because like we all have had concerns, I don't want this, you know, I don't want just the people that can afford lawyers and consultants to be able to protect themselves and everybody else get blindsided.
Well, and you, you kind of saw with, and again, we don't have, there's no process that's enumerated anywhere in county code or the WACs or otherwise for how to handle questions about the shoreline environment designations. So we've been taking that as they come in and, and, you know, individually processing them. And in this instance, for Offutt Lake, you had two different landowners who chose to hire environmental consultants and attorneys and have them, you know, work with staff or give information to staff. And in the case of Lake Lawrence, you had a group of citizens who did the same thing. And, you know, the, the process was the same in terms of my end, right, is looking at all the information that came in, looking at the criteria and coming to planning commission with information. And so there's no, there's no, you know, you must be this tall to ride. You must, you must hire so-and-so to do a report before we'll talk to you. You know, if we can look at the criteria alongside any sort of written testimony people want to send in, you know, and, and do that.
Over a year ago, Scott had said that he thought we would be looking at this characterization mapping, much like he did with the zoning and having us look at it more carefully. And from seeing what we've already seen, I'm thinking maybe we need to do that. Because if the difference between conservancy and natural is just, nobody's done anything with the shoreline. I can see Donnie Brook.
Yeah, and that's part of the, part of the issue in looking at the criteria and how it, it doesn't give us that guidance, right? It doesn't say that ecologically intact means that it's never been touched. I mean, there's not a whole lot of old growth left anywhere, you know, let alone Thurston County. So it, that doesn't help, right? So I'm, it doesn't make our jobs any easier. But any sort of conversation like that about opening up the shoreline environment designations, as far as I understand it, it's outside of the scope of the current work program. So I'm gonna look at Jennifer Square for anything.
Well, I, I really think that if there's no opportunity for somebody to appeal and Well, I, I really think that if there's no opportunity for somebody to appeal an SCD decision once the plan has been adopted, that we really need to lean towards the side of the property owner's development rights initially. Because if we start taking away, you know, property owners' development rights without them being fully aware of what's going on, I'm very uncomfortable with that.
So we're not doing that. We haven't done that. We won't be doing that. That's the whole point of this transparent process and that we've created these maps that we're going to be able to put out on the open house site, do the postcard mailing. And we're going to have the opportunity to be very transparent about any of these changes with folks.
I understand that. And I also understand that, that ecology doesn't give us an opportunity to set up an appeals program for anybody that's in there. Our hands get kind of tied about once things get adopted as a county, there's only so much we can do. But since we do have tied hands on this, I really want to make this as easy on people as possible.
So is there an ask in there for a different process or are we good with moving forward?
Things are going unless you can get ecology to let us have them.
I think we need to maybe just see how this plays out in terms of putting our information out there, dealing with the citizen questions and inquiries and requests to have things reevaluated through the finalization of the drafts and through the public hearing process. And there will be probably several more work sessions where we're looking at maps like this. I will anticipate that right now.
Thank you.
Yes, my position is depending on how many requests we get between now and, and the, the open house is, is going to tell me whether I need to ask to see everything.
Right. And there's only, there's only one more in front of us right now. It was brought up during the public comment portion. We've gotten one more on Lake Lawrence. And so you will receive documentation on that ahead of having a discussion on that. That letter was addressed to the board and also went to Jennifer and was filtered down to myself. So we'll get that into your hands. And then I'll do another plug for, I think you're, I mean, I think we're gonna, we're not going to be done after the next one. I'm sure we're going to get more. And so if there is additional information that would help you make your decision or a different way to bring this stuff to you, that would be useful, let me know. Because, you know, we're kind of building the process here. So if, if the way that I'm packaging this up for you is not hitting the mark and as a body you want something else, I'm happy to have that conversation at any point. Okay.
Done.
Is that, okay. All right. Let me move on. All right. So some follow-up from the last meeting that we had, just some general updates for you. I went back and asked some questions for ecology and did some reading. There were questions about whether looking at the fair market value of docs in determining whether your doc is going to be exempt from the requirements of an SDP. There were, you know, there's cost limitations on that. And the question was, if you need to pay X amount of dollars for shoreline fees, is that calculated into that cost? And the answer is no. Shoreline fees are not considered part of the fair market value of a project. The cost thresholds for docs in saltwater versus freshwater. In saltwater, it's a lot lower. You, you hit that threshold for requiring an SDP much sooner than you do for a dock in freshwater. And the subbullets there is I cut some text out of an email from Sarah Castle from ecology. And what she told me was that, you know, restoring Puget Sound is a priority for the state legislature. And therefore, the state legislature would like local governments to be issuing shoreline permits for development in saltwater to ensure that that resource is not being impacted or that those impacts are being minimized or mitigated. So again, this is, this information is pertaining to that section in the WAC and in SMP that says, you know, you are exempt from an SDP if your dock construction is below a certain value. And that comes from state law in terms of exemptions from that permit. And I don't believe that we have the bandwidth to change that. But that is some background information on that issue. And then the last item pertains to bulkheads. There were, my notes are freezing. There were questions last time about whether there are any carve-outs or exceptions for bulkheads on lakes or bulkheads that are designed to, you know, prevent damage to the environment or loss of function. So in the WAC, erosion is called out as a, as providing shoreline function. And there's no specific language in the WAC in terms of one type of shoreline type versus the other. There do not appear to be any specific carve-outs in the WAC for bulkheads that are not associated with protecting existing primary structures, new non-water dependent development, which includes single-family homes, development that cannot be cited elsewhere, or protecting restoration and hazardous substance remediation projects. So those are the times when bulkheads can be permitted per the WAC. So that, and I know we're not, probably not done having this conversation about bulkheads, but that's, that's what I found so far. There are some citations for you in terms of, you know, the purposes of making allowances for bulkheads in state law. But that is what I have on that issue thus far. And conveniently, we're about to dive into chapter 600. And, you know, bulkheads and other shoreline stabilizations are going to be a part of that conversation. So with that, if there are no questions, I will move on and we can jump into 19600 and I will take a moment to switch over. If I can find the right window. Just take a moment here. All right. Are we seeing chapter 19600? Yep, great. Let me blow that up. Okay. So tonight we'll continue our review of the SMP. We got to the end of chapter 19500 at the last meeting, so we'll start off with 19600. And pretty, pretty shortly thereafter, we'll run into the use matrix and I will have some comments and some thoughts on that. So again, we're looking for, you know, any specific text changes that the Planning Commission would like staff to incorporate or any options that you want to have considered as we continue to build this public hearing draft. So with that, I will open it up and I'm just gonna call out by section. Are there any comments or questions on 19600, 100, or 102?
A general comment on the whole chapter 600 is, I made the point before, is the difference between marine river and lake environments in Thurston County. There's a significant difference in all three. And more difference between the marine and river versus lakes. And so in many places in here, it puts in requirements that really are only needed in the marine environment, not in rivers or lakes. And there's places where it has requirements for, that are really only applicable to rivers, but they're, they go to lakes and marine also. And I believe that there's somehow we need to separate those. And so some sections could be combined, but there are some areas where they need to be separated. So general comment for the whole thing.
Great. Oh, sorry. Go ahead.
No, I'm done.
Yeah, and I think this is the time to do that. And I think like with the bulkheads, you know, that question was asked about, you know, generally, are there different standards that should apply in those different areas? And so when I hear that and when, when, when we see the examples of that language in this chapter that you want to have that conversation about, we can run them through the lens of what the WAC says. And if there's an allowance in the WAC or specifically something that does not disallow it, then we can potentially do that. But if, if it's pretty crystal clear that, you know, these standards are to apply to all shorelines writ large, then I think we're, I think our options are potentially, or your options are potentially limited. But I think, I think looking at that on an issue by issue is going to be the way to go there. And I know that that's been, you know, I know we've, we've talked about that before. So I'm aware of that concern.
But if we could take a position, I'm asking the question, if we took a position in some cases, let's just say about the bulkheads, that it is different for lakes. And we assume that the legislature didn't know or didn't, wasn't informed by the bureaucracy that there is a difference, that they wrote it in there and then didn't call it out specifically, that we made an assumption that they didn't mean lakes because of the utropic nature of the lakes in some counties, specifically Thurston County. And it's a different situation and moved ahead with it and then pushed the issue. I know it's a pain to push against ecology, but.
And I think in those cases, if that's something that the, the Planning Commission will want staff to look into, you know, we can look at what the guiding principles are in state law and then look at those specific sections that apply to these specific uses and modifications that are in this chapter and see if there are any, any, you know, prescriptions, right? Because a lot of the language that you see in these development standards is cut and paste from the WAC or is largely influenced by what's in, in the WACs. So again, when we see those things that you would like to question or challenge, you know, we can see what we can do.
Yeah. So I guess that, that relates right to item one, 102, item one, is where's the science? Or lakes? They don't have the science as we found with the suits, the lawsuits that the Gooey Duck people took against the state and won because they didn't have the science. I'd like to see the science that says that for lakes.
Yeah.
I mean, my main concern is water quality. That's the ultimate for everything. Is, that's why we're doing all of this stuff is for the water quality and, and the life and flora and fauna, whatever you want to call it, in, in lakes, rivers and, and the marine environment. So I'd like to see the science for that.
Yeah. And just so you know, or so everyone knows, this specific section was added in based on ecology's suggestion because shoreline master programs are required to implement these principles anyway. So, you know, she said, you might as well put that in there, have that listed because, you know, your master program's required to meet that. I would have to, and I, you know, there, there's not going to be a silver bullet to answer that question, I don't think. But if that is an issue that, you know, you want us to look into in the Planning Commission, I'm going to look to other folks and see what, you know, and try to get as much prescriptive direction from you as possible so that, you know, when I go back, I'm making good use of time.
I'd like to see ecology gives, give us a science that shows in a utropic lake that shoreline erosion is good for the environment.
Doug, are you asking for ecology to defend the WACs? Or are you asking, I'm, I'm trying to get clarity on what we're asking for here.
Well, you know, I haven't been around government workings for very long. But they have to show, if we sued, if, if the consumers sued them, they'd have to show the science. And if they don't have the science, they'll lose, which has been, which has already been proven by the, by the Gooey Duck industry.
Okay, so there's kind of two levels here because the county's job is to ensure that we're compliant with state law, which has been passed and adopted. And there's guidance out there and there, I'm sure is science backing that. But our, our role is to take that forward and to adopt it into our local programs. And the, the issue of questioning the fundamental science behind that state law seems outside the scope of what we are able to do during this SMP update. I think it's a totally reasonable question. I'm just wondering if that's where staff should be putting their time as opposed to trying to come into compliance with state law with this update right now.
If that's the case, then why do we allow three-minute presentations by the public? I mean, we're, we're serving the public. We're supposed to be doing things in order, in this case, relative to the environment and protecting the shoreline and, and our consumers. They're not consumers, but you know, the, the voting public. That's what, that's how I feel.
Andy, is there any way that we could get ecology on board with the idea that a bulkhead on a utrophic lake would actually improve ecological function by keeping the lake from becoming more utrophic?
Um, I can't presuppose what their answer to the question would be. But I have had some, you know, short email exchanges with Sarah Castle, who is our, you know, my go-to person for shorelines. And I specifically teed up this question about bulkheads and lakes. And she said, no, there are no exceptions for that in, in the state law. And that, that's consistent with what I found when I went to take a look. You know, and if anything, it, it, the use of shoreline structural modification is predicated largely on, you know, it being to protect an existing use and, and existing, or excuse me, an existing structure and existing structures that are at risk for, you know, loss or damage within three years as demonstrated by a geotech report and only if there are other measures that would not work instead. So structural modification of the shoreline, you know, is, is sort of a last resort when you look at the WAC.
So can?
That is consistent with this principle here for shoreline modification.
Can, can a bulkhead be used to protect a use?
Um, where, hang on, where are my notes go? I would say the only, so there's kind of four general situations or scenarios where it could be applied and it's existing primary structures, new non-water dependent development that can't be cited elsewhere. And that includes single-family homes or protecting restoration projects and hazardous substance remediation projects. So there really isn't a whole lot of leeway there. I mean, we can, we can, oh, sorry, go ahead, Doug.
What Eric, the question Eric asked was about utrophic lakes. And you responded with asking ecology about lakes. There are some lakes that are pristine within the state, pristine in the sense that they don't have, they're not utrophic. And, but there's a big difference. Big difference in the, in the.
Right.
Ecological function of the shoreline as well as the water quality and clarity and whatnot at the lake. So we need to ask the question relative to a utrophic lake.
Well, in looking at the WAC, there's no, there's no specific references for any, any types of lakes. And again, shoreline erosion is called out as a providing shoreline biological function and not being in detriment of it.
And that's a function of feeder blocks and in both rivers and marine environment. And nobody thought about the utropic lake when they were writing the dump thing.
It, it is silent on the issue of lakes, marine or stream.
Yeah. I know it is so. But if we ask the question about utrophic lakes and the science behind it being of value.
I, I understand what your concern is there, but it sounds like, I mean, I guess we can ask, but it sounds like, it sounds like from what Andrew just read, that the, the statute doesn't make that distinction. I mean, and, and you understand you're arguing that, but doesn't, doesn't.
Just writing. Is there a specific ask that a majority of the planning commissioners present tonight would like staff to follow up with related to this question and find a little more information on that could help this discussion?
Eric, why don't you repeat what you asked last?
Well, I guess. I get, I guess I would want to know definitively if we can use shoreline modifications to protect ecological function or use shoreline modifications to protect uses? And if there's any leeway in that, in the WAC or ecology's opinion?
So uses or ecological function? And then is there leeway in WAC or ecology's interpretation thereof?
And do you mean that for streams, lakes and marine?
Specifically for lakes.
And what about the utrophic nature of lakes in Thurston County?
Well, I, I would think that the utropic nature of it would be, would be part of it. I mean, if, if we can, if a landowner can show that their bulkhead project would be beneficial. To ecological function in a utrophic lake by keeping more of their lawn out of the water. Then if there's a provision in that in our SMP and in the ecology guidelines in the WAC. Uh, I'd like to see that happen, but I don't know if that, I don't know if that there's any path there.
And potentially the planning commission and looking through, um, the other uses on the shoreline like residential uses can, can. Look at standards that might, um, get at other issues that cause pollution and utification of lakes, you know, so. And the lawyers and all that sort of stuff.
The, the train of thought on protecting uses is if, if I've had a waterfront fire pit. For, you know, a hundred years down on my lake cabin, but it's quickly going to fall into the lake. Can I put up a bulkhead to save my fire pit? Or to save anything that I already used down there and has been used by volleyball court or my dog walker, whatever.
Yeah. Uh, well, when we get there, uh, in six hundred, um, you know, we can certainly have. So this whole conversation about bulkheads and strong stabilization is certainly coming back, right? Because we're going to go through six hundred, we're going to get right into that section. Um, so maybe this is a little premature, but you know, we can look at what the code says and we can, or what, excuse me, what the draft. SMP says, and then we can look at what's in state law and what's allowed. So I mean, that might be an issue that. Well, I don't know, I, you know, I could certainly give you all a, a reading assignment and say, here's all the sections of of state law that speak to this. And, you know, take a look at it, uh, you know, to help with that discussion. And then we, when we come back, we can look at that, we can put it up on the screen and run through it and see what it says as a group. I mean, that's an option. But yeah, I mean, it's going to come down to, um. What the wax either allow or disallow and then, you know, us trying to thread that needle. Uh, and trying to work with ecology on any questions that, you know, the majority of the planning commission wants us to run to ground.
Thanks for, that was a good clarification of the question, Eric, and I think that's something we can spend a little bit of time on and. Uh, bring back for sure. I just want to get, don't want to get us too far down the rabbit hole of questioning all of the assumptions being made behind every WAC. And every portion of state law. That's not our mission. I think that it's totally reasonable to think about. Certain circumstances in Thurston County, how the law is applying and whether we have any wiggle room within that. Um, to adjust things to our local circumstances that is appropriate. So we can definitely take that back to ecology and do some digging too in the literature and see what we can find.
Thank you.
Hey, you can see here in item three, only allow shoreline modifications that are appropriate to the specific type of shoreline. And environmental conditions for which they are proposed. I mean, if I wanted to loosely interpret that. I could say, okay, the lake is the type, a type of shoreline and the environmental condition is it's utrophic. So we don't want it dumping more dirt and, and organic matter into the lake.
So the other thing, I mean, the one thing. Uh, go ahead, Ed.
Well, I just say, I, I, I agree you could, but this is a general principle. Uh, you know, Doug, I mean, so, but when it comes. The, uh, the bulkheads and stuff, we got to look at the specific laws and whacks. They control this general statement.
Yeah, that's pretty much what I was going to say. Um, you know, these overarching principles are just that, they're, they're overarching. And then, you know, you dig down further and there are specific, um, statements about, you know, how and when and where. But we can, I can try to bring more clarity to that. I like Jennifer's comment about kind of thinking about where does planning commission and, you know, county decision makers. Have the, the bandwidth to make a change versus, you know, what is in the WAC and what is. What goes, right? Some things we're just not going to be able to change. Uh, without, you know, ecology saying, you know, when they review this whole package, saying this doesn't match. This requirement, you need to change it, we won't accept this. So that's kind of, that's what we're trying to do here is, is ultimately get forward with a document that we know is going to pass muster with ecology. But yeah, we'll look at it. Okay, great. Um, are there any other comments in, uh, section one oh two? Otherwise. Remember scroll and we'll keep going. Okay. So we're down into the use and modifications ma- matrix. And before we work through this, I did want to tee up. Uh, an issue here. So one item that needs to be resolved prior to the hearing is. What types of permits the planning commission is proposing to, uh, that, that various shoreline uses and modifications need to obtain. More specifically, whether they should be administrative versus when, when they should require hearing examiner review. Uh, as written, shoreline, shoreline development permits, conditional use permits and variances all require. Uh, hearing examiner review. However, if it's an administrative conditional use permit or an administrative variance, it does not. Um, there are not currently any administrative shoreline substantial development permits in here. However, the planning commission does have the ability to, to do so. So for any of these uses that are listed here, if the planning commission feels that they can be handled administratively. That's something that you have the flexibility to, to direct staff to do. And that is something that the permitting information, the language that is proposed in chapter nineteen fifty five hundred can be amended to reflect. Whatever direction you provide. So one thing I'll call to mind as you're looking at this is, um, the permit typing for the SMP draft, which is based on county code. Um, type three, so shoreline substantial, all, all the shoreline permits. Uh, are essentially requiring hearing examiner review in the draft. Um, based on, um, because they're based on the type three permit that the county, uh, issue. So county takes all the, all the permits the county can issue and they are typed out one through four. Uh, and as you get up that ladder, they get more and more complex. Uh, what y'all are working on here is a type four amendment. It's an amendment to development code. Or to county code rather, um, and so type three and type three permits are those permits that are the most complex. They're the most controversial that the county issues for individual landowners or, or, um, property owners. And because of that, uh, currently the county requires hearing examiner review for, for anything that's a type three. That is not a requirement, it's just how that code was structured. And again, the SMP draft is based on the, on the underpinnings of the SMP draft and the permit structure is based on. The county's underlying permit system just for, for, for consistency. Uh, and so what I, what we should be thinking about, what you should be thinking about, uh, when we're discussing. Which uses and modifications should be administrative versus requiring hearing examiner review. Um, is think about, um, you know, which types of permits are the most complex? Which ones require the review of a whole lot of technical information, a whole lot of, um, you know, dissertation and material. And that have a lot of public interest. Those are potentially the types of things that might be more appropriate to have a hearing examiner review. Uh, versus, you know. Uh, an individual doc permit or, uh, you know, something like that, you know, perhaps that does not. There are perhaps planning commission will feel after looking at all the standards that that does not require. Hearing examiner review. So, you know, these things are set up this way for a reason, but, um, you know, there's, you can make changes. Uh, the bottom line, um, well, interested in, you know, as we look into this matrix. Uh, is there anything that jumps out at you that you want to discuss as administrative versus hearing examiner? Or, uh, if you want to wait as we continue through the standards, you know, there's also time to do that as well. Because each use and modification, uh, section starts out with, you know, what type of permits required. So there's kind of two bites at the apple here. There's one as we look through this matrix. And then again, as you look through the details, so I am curious if something jumps out at you as we move through the matrix, but we'll have more time. Um, to look at that, uh, but the bottom line is you have expressed interest in calling out permits that, um, could. Be reviewed administratively, you have the discretion to do that, we have the tools to kind of filter what might be appropriate. And I just want to make sure that I'm capturing your direction in building this draft. So with that, um, we can start moving through this, um, and you know, if there's anything. So yeah, I kind of tried to wrap my brain around how, how to have this conversation with you and, and, uh, bring you the information you need to make those decisions. So, you know, that's on the table as well. So back to you. Any?
Yeah, I, I, I would advocate a, uh, administrative cup for aquaculture. I think that the amount of hoop jumping that it takes for aquaculture to go through with. Everyone from the feds through the state, by the time it gets down to the county. Um, there is already a mountain of paperwork and a pile of oversight that's already been done. So just, uh, letting these people get on with their business with a, uh, administrative cup would be my preference.
Okay, I'm going to pull this up just so that it's on the screen and, um, I have your faces pulled up in front of the draft. Are you guys seeing, you're not seeing your own faces hopefully, or are you?
Well, we see our own faces and as well as the draft, so we're fine.
Okay, good. I, what I'm saying is my, your, your faces are covering it for me. I just want to make sure. So, okay, so, so this is what Eric's talking about here under aquaculture. So you were saying, uh. Okay, for, for, was it specifically for the, the gooey duck aquaculture, right?
Would be because that's the only one that requires a conditional use permit and, and like to see that. Uh, and administrative option for a conditional use permit for gooey duck.
Okay. Is there any other, any other thoughts the folks have about that?
Well, I wouldn't think that, uh, even natural, Eric. But I know they've jumped through hoops already, so they're either allowed to or not, but I don't.
Well, I mean. I, I guess that gets back to the argument of, of how much impact does the, the uplands have on the aquatic lands? And, um. You know, I don't think that, I, I, I'm just not real big on that whole argument because when people are doing gooey duck, they're not really going up onto the. The uplands, that, that all happens from the water side or from the beaches, so. You know. I, I would be fine with, with them all having an option for administrative cup.
Okay, um.
And Andy, um, do we need to formalize an administrative SDP? Going into the, I mean, there's a ton of these in here that as far as I'm concerned should be administrative SDP that are.
I was looking at, and I, in, in preparation for this meeting, I had some conversations, uh, with Brett Burris, who's our development services director. Kind of about what's, what, what leeway do we have to work with this stuff? Um, I think that based on my review so far, and maybe I'll say differently as we get toward the end of it. But based on what I've, how I've looked at it so far, I don't think that there's going to be a whole lot of. Change needed in the prevailing chapter of nineteen five hundred to make this happen. I think it's, can be pretty surgical. Uh, both the conditional use permit and the variance sections in the preceding chapter. Uh, both say, you know, a, a variance is a type five unless it's, uh, administrative and then it's a type one. So I don't think it's going to take a whole lot to create that option. Um, I was kind of mulling that over in my brain a little bit. I don't see that it's going to be terribly complex. And what I'm thinking here is that we would just potentially, we would change the legend here so that if it's administrative. You know, I, the, it might be a little A, big C, little A, big P or something like that. That, that makes that change here. We'll have to make those changes down in the text, but I don't think there's a whole. Lot of change we need to do on the, on the, um, in the permit chapter.
Do you need a motion from us to move ahead with that?
I don't necessarily need a motion on this one, I think, but, but I am looking for, um. Uh, you know, a majority of nodding heads and I, you know, I think, uh. Motions might get a little repetitive, uh, with, you know, there being however many hundred pages to go in this document, but. I'm, you know, is there anyone who objects to that or is that? Something staff is able to go ahead and change to administrative conditional use permit?
Can I make a suggestion here? We're, we're starting to run out of time and we still have a couple of items on our agenda. Can the, the changes that you guys, that you are mentioning that you want to see in this? Can you just maybe email them to Andrew instead of us going through them all? And then at their next meeting, we can kind of go, we can.
Yeah.
This government least.
If that's okay with Andrew, I don't mind, uh, sending him a list of my ideas.
That's fine. Um, and yeah, anything that you guys send to staff as comments, um, just as a general reminder, we send it out to the whole group. We post it on the website as part of written materials. Uh, and then, you know, we, you know, I, I may read and do some research into it, but I wait until I get direction from the body to, um, to make the change. So yes, if, if you guys want to send that to me, uh, we, I can be a conduit to get that out to the group and, and we'll get it online. And then it'll be in front of everyone when we come back and have this discussion.
Awesome.
Yeah, the one thing I would like before we do that though, is there, there are places here on the shoreline residential where I would. Um, do the administrative SDP. Um, for an existing structure. But for a new housing development with a community property and whatnot, that's different. And how do we separate those things? New construction versus old. And, you know, it's just another example like the marine and river and, you know, it's development is development as far as this document is concerned.
So I think, uh, one way to do that and, you know, the table can. We, we can make new entries on the table if it becomes parsed out more than that, that certain residential uses require administrative and others are not. Um, I think as. As, well, we, and actually I know we have to address that anyway, so I will not say what I was going to say. But as you move through this document and you look at the uses and mods and you look at the opening of each section. It tells you whether it, it requires a cup or a, a SDP or a very, you know. Uh, and that's the place to make that change. You just, you could say it for, for X type of this use, it's this. For Y type of use, it's this. So that can, we have space to do that and then, you know, the table can be amended to reflect that. So it's, it's going to come out of these conversations that you are having, but whatever level of granularity, the planning commission. Direct staff to do, you know, we will make those changes and then it'll be in the document. All right, um. That might, given your other business on the agenda, that could be a good place to stop, I think. Um, I know there will still have many discussions about these various uses as we move through the document. And I'll be preparing some information for you based on things you've requested tonight and, uh, the previous meetings specifically for aquaculture, but. Feels like a good stopping point for me. The last two things I would mention, um, or one thing I would mention. The, we did, um, do a minor web update on the shoreline master program website. So we consolidated a lot of the information that was out there and instead of having a dropdown menu with like eight different. Uh, menus, now there's three. So that should be easier for folks to look at. A lot of the content is still largely there, but. We're going to push the most recent drafts to the top and the, the previous versions of the drafts the planning commission has looked at are further below. And labeled with the year they were put out. So hopefully if someone's going to our website, they are more easily able, able to navigate, find what they are looking for. See where you are at with that October twenty twenty draft. And figure out, uh, pretty easily how to contact staff or otherwise get involved. So take a look, uh, it's been updated and, you know, once we are ready to launch the open house, that will, uh, be put out there as well. And that, that would be all I have for you. Thank you.
Okay, uh, do you have any staff updates, Jennifer?
Uh, no, uh, wait, one quick one, uh, for the good of the order, the ag project, uh, community driven review of agriculture. It's a big project on the docket reviewing our agriculture policies and programs. So that community survey has gone out. You all received it. If you haven't let me know, feel free to pass that along to folks you, um, work with. Who you might know are interested in agriculture. We want it distributed far and wide and it's live and able to be. Filled out until February fifteenth and, uh, after we get all those survey results, we'll be doing a check in brief with the board. And, uh, I can, I can share them with you as well, but we're moving along on that project. It will not come to you with proposals. Until probably mid-year at the earliest. That's it, that's it.
Okay, so. I will go ahead and turn it over to Eric and Doug for the nominating committee.
Okay, uh, nominating committee, uh, consisted of very. Okay, uh, nominating committee consisted of Eric Casino and myself, Doug Carmen. We contacted each of the planning commissioners and asked them three basic questions. One was, are you interested in running for an office? If not, who would you nominate? And then a general question about the planning commission and what they'd like to see changed or updated or something. And as a result of that, we nominate Jim Simmons for president for chair. I don't know whether you want to take these one at a time, Scott, or both together.
Let's do the whole thing.
Both, okay. And we nominate Eric Casino as the vice chair.
Okay. So we have a slate from the nominating committee. Are there any other nominations from the floor? Are there any other nominations from the floor? And are there any other nominations from the floor? Okay, I don't hear anything, so. I guess we have a motion to accept the slate from the nominating committee.
So moved.
Second, I guess, if I can.
You can. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. So all those in favor of accepting the recommendation from the nominating committee, which is Jim Simmons for chair and Eric Casino as vice chair, please signify by saying aye, aye. Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Good luck, Jim.
Yeah, you got my back, Scott. I know you're there. Thanks, guys.
Okay, and then the third, third thing we discussed is those things that comments the commissioners might want to make relative to what we do and how we do it. Uh, same thing came up first this year as as last year is needing a the planning commission email so that we don't get our personal emails tied up in any kind of informational public information request. Second item was spend less time on items that the PC has little control over, such as the capital budget. So we have more time for other things that we have more control over. Then since the completed work of the planning commission is presented to the BOCC in a briefing format, have a planning commissioner attend those briefs, briefings to answer any questions the BOCC might have as to why the PC made those recommendations. To have someone in attendance there, so in case the BOCC has questions. And the the fourth thing was provide the planning commission with the general background of the other commissioners for better understanding of their skills and experience. So we know who we're, who we're working with. We understand the 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 talent and knowledge and background that they bring to the position. Those are the four items that people that members brought up.
Okay, and I know that we did, we have discussed the emails before and we discussed it at our meeting with the board. And then this COVID thing hit and I'm not sure where that, I'm not sure what's happened to that.
It is uh, in our IT department's hands at this point in time. So I'll do another check in, I've checked in a few times. I'll check in again on where we are with that request.
They should be able to do it with Google, Google meets or Google, Google Drive. We could all get a Google Drive account with, you know, at ThurstonCounty.com. And it would keep it separate from everybody else's email and but yet give us a separate one, so just an idea.
Noted.
Okay, and yeah, we used to, well, I guess we kind of, when people, we used to, when people came on, did a you know, kind of an in, longer introduction at our meetings so that everybody kind of knew and I guess I've forgotten to do that, so that's on me. Maybe at our next meeting during introduction of planning commissioners, we could ask that people give a little background on themselves. So any, anything else?
No, other than that, I I guess all four of these items is is asking staff to respond to, so. So for next, next month, our next meeting, I assume I'll have some kind of response to them.
I can promise some kind of response to them.
Okay, let's move on to calendar. Is there anybody that won't be here on February third? Is there anybody that is not available on February seventeenth? Okay, sounds like we got people. We should probably check because we do only have six tonight. Does anybody else have anything for the good of the order?
Yeah, Scott, I just wanted to thank you for, this year has been difficult doing Zoom calls for the planning commission. You did a really good job with it and thanks a lot.
Thank you, Scott, for all of your work.
Thank you, everyone, for making what I do pretty easy. So with that being said, it's eight twenty-six and we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Good night, all.